Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 3 work session at Keystone Central School District Board of Directors. We will start with a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I did it.
Now we have the camera. All right.
Mrs. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Elling?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knopf?
Here.
Mr. Koch? Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Strauss?
Here.
Eight members present.
The board held an executive session this evening from 6:17 PM to 6:34 PM to discuss personnel and legal matters. And we will move on to our presentations first up is a budget update.
Would you like me to share my screen?
Yes, please.
Yep. I hope it's disabled.
Try again.
Yes, got it.
Now, while Susan's bringing that up, just wanted to let everyone know we had a finance committee meeting two days ago. And it's all running together. Two days ago, we did, we were able to share a draft presentation with members of the board who also provided us with some feedback. And so we made some modifications to that draft presentation to what you'll see tonight. And as you know, we bring you a budget update every several months. And as of, these numbers are as of March 1st. And so, Susan, we're going to just kick right into our regular routine.
Okay.
The first thing that you'll see is a chart that we've added to the presentation at the request of a board member. And when we pulled this data out of our system, one of our databases, we looked at the comparison of Keystone Central to all of the other districts in IU 10, which would encompass all of Clearfield County, all of Center County, and of course, we're the only district in Clinton County. And so you can see what this is representing is an equalized mill rate comparison. So where do we rank among our neighbors in IU 10? And Susan, I'll let you, you know, if you want to share any other insights about this slide.
Yeah, I think just the most important takeaway from this is the higher the equalized mill, it represents a higher tax burden on the local taxpayers. And the average here amongst all of these districts is 17.642. And you'll see Keystone falls just right there above 15. So I just wanted to point out what, what equalized millage rate means for those that might not know.
I think I'll summarize, the finance committee felt that this was a very positive slide, positive feedback for the taxpayers in Keystone Central. Does anybody else want to make a comment to that while, while we're on this one?
I just thought it's important that we know how we compare it to the local schools around us. Using the IU is probably the best spot to go. And looking at how we fare against rest homes, we're in the lower third, I guess it would be. So look like we compared work pretty well.
You know, we're not able to see, sitting here, if there are board members at, who are online who want to speak. So we can't see them as, are you able to see them, Chad? On the side window? So like Elizabeth and Polly are at home. Can you see them?
I can, yes.
So we can't tell if they're raising their hands. So somebody's going to have to, maybe board members, you'll have to unmute because we can't see you when this presentation's up.
Yeah, I was pleasantly surprised with this, this, with this slide because of the, of where we fell on here. I was pleased to see that, really.
Thank you, Chad.
This is Elizabeth, I, Susan and everyone for doing this. You know, for the finance committee, it's, it was shocking to me, very good news. And that means that if you can't see me and if I raise my hand, does that mean I'm going to be interrupting people?
We can see.
We can see now.
Okay, good, good. Because I don't want to do, okay, thank you, thank you.
Anything else on this screen?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The first couple of slides here are information that we added from the finance requests, I guess, that we got in. And I don't know, Jackie, if you wanted to talk.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we were asked for an enrollment breakdown by district level over the last 10 years. So there's a couple of caveats. I just want to mention 2017 and 18. You see the numbers spike there a little bit. That's when the district had pre-K. And so those counts are included in this graph. So you can see the consistent decline over the last 10 years. And in comparison to this, the finance committee had asked if we would also look at full-time equivalency employee count. And so we broke that out for them, starting in 1718, because this was more of a manual, going back through historical data and trying to track this manually. So we didn't get back 10 years, but we did go to 1718 and broke it out by the type of contract that each type of employee falls within. And then it's all funds, so it's not just general fund, which is where your tax base goes into, but it's also the food service fund and the tax office fund. Any questions on either one of these slides? No? Okay. We added in two slides referencing our ESAR funding. This is the three main ESAR grants that we have received. There are additional set aside ESAR grants that we're also managing, but these are the three main ones that we are managing between now and June of 2024. So this graph just shows you by percentage of category where the $17 million is estimated to be spent. It's color coded here at the bottom. And then as we go into the next two slides, it shows more about what grant and what category are estimated to be spent by year. So it's the same information, it's just two different ways of looking at, at those expenditures or anticipated usage. 2122, of course, is finalized, so that is actual dollars by category. Every other year moving through is projected. And I just want to mention, with these grants on the Keystone Central School District website, there's an entire ESAR page. Included on that page is a community feedback email. So any stakeholder out there that has thoughts, suggestions, ideas, questions, feel free to send us an email and let us know. That is a requirement of the grant to seek feedback. So far, we have not received any, but we are open, willing and able to get such. Any questions on this? Okay, so now we're getting into the typical slides that everybody's used to seeing.
Again, we're progressing along our timeline. We, you know that we have state mandates, things that we have to do by certain times within the, the school year. And we're at the point where you're previewing the general fund budget development. We keep you in, in the loop about where we are right now. And you'll see that we are, our goal has been from the beginning to have, bring you a balanced budget with no tax increase. We will be giving you a review of the general fund budget again in April. And then you will be required to adopt a proposed final budget in May that is balanced. And then your, adopt your final budget in June. So the next couple of slides let you know where we are, because I think the next one is the governor's budget proposal. And again, I know that we have a little disclaimer there at the bottom, but I want to kind of tell you that upfront. These are all green because the governor's budget proposal looks very good. If it were to go through as proposed, Keystone Central would be in really great shape. But we also are not counting on, nor should we count on any of these dollars until they come to actual fruition. So you can see state subsidy is projected to be an increase of 3.1 million to us through basic ed and special ed increases. Again, we're not counting on this. We do think, we are hopeful that some of that special education funding would come through, but again, we won't count on it. And then the charter funding changes, the, the projected savings for the charter funding changes are almost $3 million. I know that this board has passed a resolution about some charter funding change. And we need to continue to be vigilant about educating our legislators in the area of charter funding and what that would mean for Keystone Central specifically. So Susan, anything else you want to add here?
No, I think, just want to reiterate the fact that these increases in savings are not included in the slides that you will see later.
All right, we'll keep moving.
Okay.
You've got this one.
Okay, so through the month of January and most of February, Dr. Martin and myself sat down with all budget department heads and reviewed all of their line item budgets, zero-based budgeting. They start at zero, they justify every request tied into the, the missions and goals of the, the district and their building level plans. So they're in red because they're actually an increase in requests. Classroom budgets are your building level budgets. A big request that came through there is a, as we go through the buildings and look at our furniture, and as we see the amount of time that our property, property services individuals have spent repairing desks and chairs and all of those types of things, we just realized it's a need to start get, start to get on a furniture replacement cycle. So some of that increase you see there is due to that. And then in the support budget request, I just want to point out, the transportation budget is included in this line item. And when we initially build the budget, we use 2% as the traditional CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, every year. It, it stands pretty level at 2%. Well, with everything going on in the, the world as we see it today, it came through at 6% this year. So that was a little, little over $200,000 of that 347 that you see there. The rest of that is all of the, the other types of support budgets. It's between special ed, administration, and so forth. The directors that have budgets in their departments, curriculum and so forth. The personnel budgets, we did some more updates with additional retirements and resignations that we've received. So there are additional savings there between attritioning out vacancies, but also replacing resign, resignations as, with new hires at a lower rate. So there are savings from both of those types of situations built in here. Along with personnel costs, on the, the salary, we have the PISers and social security expenditures. What goes along with that is a state reimbursement subsidy. So it's a revenue line item that comes into the state. So you see this reduced benefit subsidy line by 202,000. What that is, is as your expenditures were cut, your corresponding revenue is also cut. So we had to reduce our overall revenue by 202,000, which offset your expenditure, or savings a little bit. The net of all of that, 229,000 went into the budgetary contingency fund. We had a conversation about this in January, when we added money into that line item then, for things like the inflation rates, district level projects, any unexpended, unexpected personnel expenditures that may come through next year that we're not aware of as of now. So as we see any, any kind of direct budgetary savings, we're putting it in this contingency line to make sure that we have funds available should an emergency arise. So the net reduction to general fund expenditures is zero.
So this leads to the fact that we're still at a balanced budget. And as we move into the budget outlook slide that you're also used to seeing, so we're proposing again, and no, no tax increase. And here's what that effect would be in out years, assuming that we don't change anything else in those out years. And this slide looks only slightly different than what you saw two months ago. And it's basically reducing our overall 2223 budget by over $200,000 from before. And I think the key thing to look at is the difference between the expenses in 2122 compared to 2223, and that we're actually decreasing our overall expenses by about a half a million dollars. And so then that has a positive effect in the out years as well.
Yep, the only thing I would add to that is the starting reserve balance has also gone down here from what you saw in January because of the resolution you'll see on tonight's agenda to transfer additional money out of the committed fund balance into capital reserve. So that's taken into consideration in these numbers.
So that takes us to the final areas for consideration that we're still looking and working on, not only this budget, but we're also working in some out years as well. And yeah, I'm maybe even more focused on 2324, looks very reasonable right now. But we can't just sit and rest on what we have. We need to continue to chip away those out-year budgets. And so in order to do that, the areas for consideration are listed on this slide. Many of them are similar to what you've seen in previous presentations. I know we don't need to read them to you, but again, we always look at staffing. Our healthcare rates are due later this month. We're in the middle of contract negotiations. Any demographic changes would result in changes to our title funding, and those are our federal dollars. I think everyone here is aware that there's a Pennsylvania school funding lawsuit where final arguments are set to be on March 10th. And this is going to be monumental for the Commonwealth is to determine, you know, what, what the outcome of this trial is, is really going to have an impact on, on us. And PA charter funding and legislation, I mention this every time we do a budget update. I know this board is committed to informing our local legislators about that charter funding. And we're actually working on organizing event for our legislators again this spring. And with cyber charters in the state being allowed to operate and receive the same amount of funds that brick and mortar charters receive, that's an ongoing concern of ours because there are no cyber charters that are state approved in Clinton County. So that means those tuition dollars are floating right down the turnpike to the outskirts of Philly and Pittsburgh. And we have no control over how those dollars are spent or what the outcomes are for those students. We do have our own KCSD Virtual Academy. It's a high-quality charter, or it's a high-quality cyber option for students. We have a healthy enrollment there. We've put a lot of effort into paying attention to those students. I know Mr. Eevee started a student of the month for our cyber students. There's a cyber newsletter, and there's some engagement with parents, even though it's through non-traditional means. So we'll continue to promote that virtual academy for parents who wish to have that option, that Keystone Central does have a quality cyber option for you. So we'll, we'll continue to work in those areas to, to bring you balanced budgets now and in the future. Are there any questions from the board members about where we stand with the current budget or out years?
I just have a thing to get Susan to explain about the changing the healthcare rates, as we talked the other day, the finance committee. Can you explain more than a time, or about why we want to have Benacron come and talk to us?
Sure.
Yeah, so our healthcare rates are usually certified in March. And we budget 7% increase every year because that is trend. Again, because of the environment of which we're in now, the trend has increased to 8%. And the preliminary healthcare increases for us were 9.2%. Of which we said, that's not going to work. Please go back. Please go back and sharpen your pencil and have your actuarial department take another look at, at what's going on. But honestly, it's COVID and it's the inflation rates that are not playing nice with us right now with these potential increases. We are hopeful that they will come in at 7% or lower. And we've asked Benacron if they, and the finance committee has asked that if they come in at 7% or higher, that Benacron come and speak to the board and explain what their actuarial department is seeing and what justifies that increase. Did I hit the, all the points?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good.
Any, any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Moves us into our second presentation of the evening. So this is the Keystone Central Achievement Update 202021, because we're obviously lagging behind in the data. And I know Megan will talk about this a little bit, but the amount of time that it took for PDE to get us the data was extremely delayed compared to previous years. Part of that due to the fact that they extended the testing window into the fall of this year. We have multiple people helping with this one.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present to you the achievement data from 2020, 2021. And just keep in mind, as Dr. Martin had mentioned, this is last year's data. So it was a very slow process to get the data back from the state. Typically, our testing window is April and May for the majority of our students. Last year, April and May was available. And then just due to COVID and the impact that that had had on so many districts, they extended the testing window out into September. And I believe it was up until September 30th, some districts were still testing. So the results are, a, as you'll see, some are pretty consistent, but others are a little all over the place. So we're going to start to look at the, the data that's the SPP State Assessment Measures, their School Performance Profile, which is the Future Ready Index. That's kind of that report card that, that schools get based on their academic data, their attendance rates, the courses they offer, on-track measures. And we'll also look at our benchmark data for the, the current school year. And that comes from our Ames Web in kindergarten, first and second. And then we have the MAP assessment that we have from three through eight. So if you look at the, the first slide here, just keep in mind, on all the slides, the blue bar, the first bar is going to be the state average. And you're going to see, just like our data, that state average jumps all over the place. So this is a third grade PSSA, and the bars represent the percent of proficient and advanced students. So our, our third grade looks, it doesn't look too bad. We move on to fourth grade, and I'm not going to read all the averages to you, you, you have this. So, so again, as I was saying, some areas, you're going to see ups and downs. But when you look at fourth grade, we, we've had some schools that excelled, but well, well above the state average. And ELA, the, the same thing, very close or above. And all of our schools for fourth grade science exceeded well above that state average. And that science test at that elementary level is, revolves around reading. So it's, it's really heavily depends on a student being able to read. So going to fifth grade, again, you see the state average and you kind of see that trend, some dips going down. Sixth grade? So sixth grade kind of looks pretty level again. So you have historically grades five and seven, just over the years of PSSA, you would see a traditional dip for whatever reason. Personal, personal opinion, I think it's, it's misalignment because it's every single year in the state data kind of shows that, that it's been that way for multiple, multiple, multiple years. Looking at seventh grade, I'll see that dip again. And then hitting eighth grade.
Justin, can I just go back to, to kind of maybe explain what you just said a little deeper?
Yes.
So when you see the fifth grade data, and you go, oh, you know what happened? And last year, if you looked at a different cohort of students in their fifth grade data, it took a dip. So the same kiddos do great in fourth, dip in five, go back up in six. I've seen that trend across three different school districts over the last 10 years. And so when you say there's misalignment, it's not misalignment between what our teachers are doing and what they're supposed to be doing. There's a clear misalignment statewide in the fifth grade curriculum and the fifth grade assessment. And it, and again, if you can't want to go across multiple school districts, you see the same thing repeatedly.
Yeah, it's been typically, third grade has always been really, really good. And fifth grade is, takes a duck.
And if I remember correctly, and Justin, maybe you know this, I believe that there's a different test creator, that the Pennsylvania uses a different test creator somewhere between three and four, four and five. And
Yeah, I'm not 100% certain on that.
It's been the same test for a long time, which is why I think the discrepancies there. But I think there was a difference in who, the company that created it. I'm sorry, Roger, go ahead.
What's going on with the seventh grade percentage of proficient and advanced? I mean, we're like way below there. What's up with that?
Well, I think you're going to hear.
So the, that seventh grade group historically, so we, there's a site called PVAS that takes their projections. It basically will take every, every test score across the Commonwealth. It puts it into some formula and it, it projects where a student should score. That particular group has just historically coming up through has been a, a low group. They've been projected to be low. And, and what that does for us, it shows us which students, without any interventions, are going to continue on that, that lower trend. Now, using that data, we have interventions in place this year based on our data that, and projections that we had to try to get them back on track.
Okay, so seventh grade is typically the one where we see this type of action going on. Why can't we prepare them better for seventh grade?
Kind of my question is, our new curriculum that we've been adopting, going to address these deficiencies?
I mean, it, it should certainly help, but I do think a factor that Justin's alluding to is, is that the state average in seventh grade is always significantly lower as well. And so, you know, the alignment of the test to the standard seems to, to be an issue at the state level. And I do think we can do things that are proactive, and, and we've put things in place. We've put interventions in place at the middle school to help address some of these needs. Because even though we know what's going to happen, doesn't mean we don't do anything about it, right? We, we need to be more proactive, we need to be using our data in a more meaningful way, which I think we're going to get to here in a little bit of, that's the importance of the benchmark assessment data, is so we know where our students currently are and can make sound instructional decisions to help them reach that proficiency level, knowing that it's a difficult year for the test, but also the double whammy of this particular seventh grade cohort is also low. So what are we going to do in response?
So remember too, I think we talked about this a couple of years ago, just because they're not over the proficiency line, doesn't mean they're not growing. But even if they're growing, they're below grade level. You give them a grade level test, they may not be proficient on this, these skills, but are they making progress? And so that's what you'll see in the benchmark.
Well, I, I'm glad to see that, you know, they're making progress. But whenever we're looking at the state average, I mean, I really would like to see it at least a little bit closer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think you have to take into consideration too, what was going on when these kids were getting the instruction. You know, with COVID and everything, it was, I don't know that, that this is quite as valid a data as you would have gotten in other years, maybe.
And we'll, we'll address this. There is actually, you, you bring up a good point. And actually, PDE recently, I believe it was just at the beginning of the week, when they you you bring up a good point, and actually, PDE recently, I believe it was just at the beginning of the week, when they released the data, because it's going to go live, I think March 11th. They sent a additional information regarding testing, and we we have that included here, but kind of alludes to what you're saying. But we can move out the, so we had eighth grade. So again, you see some various trends there, but even looking at eighth grade math, the state average 22%, which you 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 have to take it for what it is there. And again, it's obvious that I I don't believe that kids weren't learning and teachers weren't teaching, but there were a lot of interruptions, and and for our elementary schools, we kept them in school as much as possible. The secondary schools had, I I believe, a little more interruptions. Our Keystone data, so this would be Algebra One, Biology, and 10th grade Literature. So the red, the red bar is Central Mountain Middle School, and that would be a group of eighth graders that would take that Algebra One exam, and typically, those students are are high-performing students that are algebra-ready and typically do well.
So in a sense, when you see the high red and the low green, you almost have to kind of put that together for because, again, you have your advanced students taking the Algebra One Keystone in seventh or eighth grade, which are typically advanced students, they're bound to do better on that standardized test. And then the students who have been functioning at or below grade level would then take the exam in ninth grade. So that's why you're saying, it's not that the middle school is doing something different, it's the same exact curriculum.
Interrupt just for a minute, please. Oh, thank you. May we go back to the other slide? Thank you. There, please help me, I don't remember what it's called. Years and years ago, I saw, I think it was from National Education, but there's the president at the time, this might be two presidents ago, so I don't know what's current with this, but they had a percentage for each grade, each discipline, and their goal was for all American public schools students to at least achieve that line. And they called that line, and I'm sorry, I don't remember, but it would be very interesting on these graphs if that particular line, what the government, the federal government, the bar that they have placed, that they want our students to get to in relation to what we have, is, am I, am I communicating this well? I'm trying.
These slides show you that, it's just a different graphic. So you're seeing the number of students in those bars that are meeting that proficiency, it's the proficiency line.
So when I'm looking at this, when they, when they heat, when they hit 80, does that mean they've they've met that?
No, that's 80% of the students that took the Algebra One Keystone Exam at Central Mountain Middle School were proficient or advanced on, they met that bar or exceeded it.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
So then, just looking at some reflections, so our elementary PSSA data shows we're exceeding the state average in some areas. We looked at the third grade math at Mill Hall and Woodward, third grade ELA at Woodward, fourth grade math at Renova and Mill Hall, fourth grade science in all buildings. In areas that we are are not exceeding, we are, a lot of places at the elementary, we were very close, not too far off. Sixth grade math is above average, ELA was close to average. And we we addressed, kind of had some discussion already, that seventh and eighth grade cohort, that the PVOS data was showing significant gaps. The other thing to keep in mind as students go through, as as you progress to fifth grade, sixth grade, that math focus starts to hit algebra concepts, and then that becomes more heavily involved in algebra. So for some of those students, those gaps are more critical, but then in ninth, eighth or ninth grade, those students will take that Algebra One content, so it it does skill gap, they they get content, but it is difficult when try to make that up with so many interruptions. The additional information from PDE regarding testing, this was their statement that they released, participation in the 2021 or 202021 state assessments decreased more than 25%, and I think that that's pretty reserved when you start to look at the numbers. Some of the years, the participation, it was much higher than that, as far as from what I could see off of sites, when I would pull numbers, I was seeing more 40 to 50% in some of the areas that for participation that it decreased. And they're comparing that to 1819. Pandemic-related disruptions impacted testing conditions to varying varying degrees across schools and regions. Low participation yields results that are not representative of whole school or student group performance. So when you, when you think about, we had some schools that were impacted more than others, we tried to keep our schools open, and I and I can tell you, I was at Mill Hall toward the end of the year last year to to help out, and there were weeks where there was not a lot of contact tracing, and then there were weeks where it was every day, nonstop, where we were trying to pull kids and quarantining students, and when those students and and teachers, and then trying to get subs to fill that, or we were constantly rearranging to try to do what was best for students to get that instruction.
I think another important thing to note about the percentage of students who took the test is that when you think about the the people who were opting out, they're often the students, the parents and the students of our population that would have performed well on the state assessments historically. And so, you know, parents were concerned about their their child's mental health and, you know, how state assessments factor into that. And so we did see a lot of non-participating students, and a lot of those would have, do historically perform really well. So I think you kind of have to take that into account as well.
The other point from the Department of Ed, in any year, multiple data points such as participation, attendance rates, academic growth data, local assessment data should be considered simultaneously when analyzing student performance. Given the differential effects of the pandemic, comparison between schools across districts or across school years would be improper. So again, the the impact, i- it's just not real valid results. I mean, we can look at it, we can look at projections, we've taken this data, we've tried to put instructional strategies in place to help students the the best that that we can with the data that we have. And again, a lot, I know, just from being the assessment coordinator, last year, one of the opt-outs, if they they had another, usually it's you either come in and test, or it's a, there's certain criteria to opt out, and that other fell into, like, if a student was quarantined and they couldn't come in for the testing window, but a lot of parents who chose that remote or cyber option chose that because they felt that they were protecting their student from COVID. So the responses I got from a lot of parents were, why will I send my child in when I kept them home all year for their safety? So so there is different views, and and again, we can say that COVID, we can't keep blaming COVID, but but it is a a reality, and it was an impact on instruction learning and our participation rates.
I think it's important to note that PDE and superintendents across the state were requesting that PDE forego any state testing through the pandemic, and the the reason PD did not have the authority to make that decision is because the standardized tests are a federal requirement to receive federal dollars. And so they had to keep the tests in place, and so when I read the statement from PDE, it's kind of a disclaimer. You know, we had to do this, we know that this isn't consistent with other years, and we want you to be cautious about making any decisions using this data, and and I think that it's important to note that when I look at this administrative team in front of me, I know how hard they worked, along with everybody in their buildings, and how hard the teachers worked in multiple different environments to teach students the curriculum that they were expected to teach, with all of the things that were on on, you know, the obstacles that were put in their way. Some kids were in person, some were at home, some weren't there, the ones that were at home, some were doing the work, some were not doing the work, but yet we still had to use the same assessment tool that we used in every other school year. So I I caution the board and the public to put too much stock in test scores in that given year with regard to the state assessment. However, I think as we're moving into our local assessments, that's where I believe there's more validity to what our staff is doing with our students.
Absolutely. So the next section of data that we're going to look at, like Jackie is saying, is the data that we are really using every day to make really important decisions. So at the beginning of the school year, we complete our fall benchmark assessments, again, for K12, that is the Ames Web Assessment, and for grades three through eight, it is the MAP Assessment for ELA and math. In January, we completed the winter benchmark assessments, and we will do it one more time in the spring to have three assessment measures throughout the year. So the following slides are the tier transition triangles, I know that we've shared these in previous years. These triangles should represent, the green should be about 80% of our students, the yellow about 15%, and the red about 5%. And what we really want to look at in these quick snapshots of these triangles is our green growing and our other color shrinking is a really good, just quick look to see, are we seeing growth in our students, and are we able to quantify that? So you can see in kindergarten, this is for reading, you can see our green is growing, which means that students are receiving just core instruction and meeting the benchmark. Those, that yellow and red is when we put in place those interventions for students, for them to be able to reach the benchmark. So the higher percentage of green means that our core curriculum is doing its job, and that students don't need those interventions. Kindergarten math, again, looking from fall to winter, we're seeing the growth we want to see.
Megan, did they do another assessment in the spring, I assume?
Yep.
To show final growth?
Yep, yep, we do fall, winter, and spring for three measures. And you often, historically, will see much more growth from wi- from winter to spring than you do from fall to winter. And a key part of that is just overcoming that summer slide. When students come back and they're tested right away in the fall, they often are, you know, are showing pretty low, and it takes them a while to get caught back up, but we usually make a ton of growth between winter and spring.
But and these tests are nationally normed, which is why they're they're so helpful, and what they do is they give the teachers specific data per child, as a group of students, and per child, what they're ready to learn now.
So here we're.
I'm sorry, Meg, I just real quick. Thank you. I'm sorry, I must have missed. What's the difference between fall and winter? Is fall like September and winter is like December, or?
Yeah, so fall, so we give the assessment pretty quickly as soon as students come back from from summer. And then we measure them again about the halfway point in January to see how much growth they've made in that time. And then we'll do the same thing again in the spring to measure beginning of the year to end of year, but also those those halfway points as well.
Okay. Oh, sorry, bye.
No, I was just gonna say, the reason of doing that is we don't want to get too far in without analyzing where we're at. So the benchmark assessment allows us to get a pulse along the way, rather than the PSSA strategy of, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, it's final data, whereas this is, this is live data, in a in a sense.
It's wonderful, and just for the bottom row, N means national and percent, the second number is how many of our students made the national level?
No, the N means the total number of students, and and in the parentheses is what that percentage equals out to be.
So green means that they're on grade level.
They're meeting grade level.
They're meeting grade level expectations for the fall of, if you're looking at this slide, in the fall of first grade in September, what's the N number for tier one, 78?
78, yeah.
78 students or 32% of our students in first grade are on grade level in the fall. But we've been making some, so if you, if we made, everybody just grew the way they were supposed to, then you'd see the same exact thing in the winter, but what you want to see is that our efforts are showing that more students are on grade level in the winter. So it's not, it's the expectation's higher in the winter than it was in the fall, and in the spring, it's going to be higher yet. So if we're progressing through and we continue to get more green, less yellow, less red, then we're growing students more than a year in a year's time.
Thank you for the clarification. I got it.
Perfect. And then this is first grade math, and again, we're seeing our math data look, look pretty healthy here. This is second grade reading, again, we're seeing the green grow, that's what we like, see the green grow. Second grade math, again. And second grade, too, I mean, I think an important consideration is our second grade group. This is the first normal school year they've had ever as students, so.
Normal?
Well, ish, normal-ish that they've ever had, and so when we look at that particular cohort of students, they miss some really vital instruction as kindergartners, really essential content as first graders that just was not what we would want it to be. So this group is one that we keep in a close eye on, and we keep a close pulse on because we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs.
Yeah, I think is, this is across the board, I mean, not just in Keystone, I mean, I know that there's most districts are, you know, very concerned about that particular cohort of kids, and I would assume that they're going to keep close tabs on them as they go all the way through because of this, the gaps that they have.
Yeah, and and first grade is so pivotal. There's so much important, so many important skills that are taught in first grade, and so when that's disrupted, you, we definitely worry about the long-term effects of that.
They're almost, they're going to be playing catch-up.
Yeah. So now we're going to flip to our MAP data, so again, we use MAP in grades three through eight, and what you'll see on the chart up on your screen is growth data. Okay, so again, this is growth, not necessarily achievement, we want to be seeing at least a year's growth in all of our students. So this is for math, and this was actually at the end of last year. So there's a reason I put last year's data on here, this is where we ended last spring. So the little diamonds on the chart is the projected growth set by the nationally-normed assessment. So the assessment basically uses all that information and says, here's what growth each student should obtain. And then that that bar graph is what our district actually observed. Okay, so you can see, at the end of last year, we exceeded the growth projections in math across the board, with the exception of seventh grade being right there. Okay, so that's good news. But I think the better news, that this is current data, so this is, this is fall to winter, this is what our math is looking like halfway through. So you'll see that in five, six, and eight, we are already over that projected growth. And in third grade, we're right there, seventh grade, we're right there. So this is shaping up exactly how we would want it to be, knowing that we are halfway through the school year, and a lot of our students are showing more growth than was even projected by the assessment. The next slide is grades three through eight for ELA, and this was the end of last school year. ELA, we all know, has been a focus of ours in needing to address some core curriculum problems that we knew existed and we needed to plan for. And so the data that came out of last year, you can see that we had some problem areas to address. This data did not look like we wanted it to, again, all things pandemic considered. But if we look at our current data of where we are today halfway through, that that chart has has done a lot of improvement and has really kind of flipped around in terms of growth. So you'll see from last year, we actually had some negative growth. This year, those grade levels are already close to their projected growth. So we've, we've been really intentional about ELA, we've put a lot of things in place to clean up the core curriculum, but we've also put some targeted interventions in place for grades K through eight at this point, in order to address those gaps and really be intentional about the decisions that we're making that will lead to student growth, and I think we're seeing the fruits of that labor. But I also think that those changes are going to continue to yield us results in the future if we now focus on really solid implementation of those of those changes and really let those changes live out. So again, just some overall reflections on those for K to two. Our students are making growth in reading, our reading interventions are showing signs that they've been working, and that we're closing those important achievement gaps that we need to close early. Our math growth data shows signs of a healthy core curriculum. that a lot of our students are meeting benchmark just by core instruction. We're going to continue to monitor the fidelity and implementation of ELA changes that we've put in place. Like I said before, we've made a lot of changes and now we just need to really foster those changes and kind of let them do their work. In grades three through eight, our math data again shows, you know, that our, that our math is in a healthy core curriculum, or has a healthy core curriculum. But also then that those targeted interventions that we've put in place within the last year are showing some early signs of, of being successful. All right. And then Christina's going to talk about attendance and career standard benchmarks.
So my information isn't super exciting as our academic piece. And it's all really relative because as you know, COVID has really wreaked havoc on how frequently people come to work, people come to school. A lot of, a lot of times we're telling them to stay home for reasons of needing to quarantine because they're either a close contact or they're a positive case of COVID. So that really has wreaked havoc over the last couple of years. And we've tried to be very graceful in how we code our attendance to be respectful to everybody in their current situations. And our attendance data actually looks much better. So there's four years of growth on there, starting back from eighteen nineteen, which as you can see, we were all in the red and we knew we had lots of work to do. Making good progress and then COVID hits. And then when you see last year, twenty twenty-one, that looks pretty awesome. But when you're not really in school and you're all remote, that really has. It really doesn't ding your attendance. And truthfully, when everyone is quarantined, so whether you're out of school because you have a doctor's excuse or because we tell you that you have to quarantine, that counts negatively against our attendance. So the only thing that counts is towards attendance is if you are physically present in the building. If you are marked absent for any other reason, for an educational trip, even though we excuse it or a doctor's excuse for one reason or another, technically that counts against our average daily attendance, which sounds crazy. But anytime you're not in the building, you know, we get dings. So I think that's why the state goal is ninety-four percent. And if you can, you can see that all of our schools at the secondary level were above the state average and Bucktail Middle School was super close to the state goal. So I have on there our year-to-date kind of projection of where we are, which is probably a pretty current representation of where we are. With the exception of Central Mountain Middle School, I'm not really sure why Power School is telling us that they have ninety-seven percent attendance rate. As much as I would love to believe that to be accurate, I do not believe that to be accurate and I cannot figure out how it's pooling to be so. So while I would love to give Dave Peters and his team kudos for, you know, getting their kids there all the time, I don't think that's quite accurate. So.
He's making faces at you.
Probably getting ready to throw targets at him.
It looks like a good number.
Yeah. So the bottom line is we're, we're still making progress and we still have a ways to go and we have a plan for that for next year. So sticking with secondary, moving over to career readiness. Again, your state average is eighty-four point nine percent and your state goal is ninety-eight percent. And so we are almost meeting the state goal of ninety-eight percent. So obviously we're well, well above the state average. And so I do not have last year's data on here. It was, it's all pretty circumstantial at this point and I don't want to give you, this is all relative information anyway, and I would, I would rather not. But I can assure you that we are at least where we were in nineteen twenty for last year. We have a plan on what we've been doing. All of our counselors and our teachers can run reports so they have expectations for every grade level that reports. And so if kiddos are falling behind where their expected artifacts are, then they pull them in and they provide them that support to get that completed. Plus, we've incorporated these career portfolios as a graduation requirement for all of our students.
So in general, green is good, blue is awesome. What color will the career ready blocks be next year, folks?
We might be looking for a different job if they are not blue. And so then looking at our graduation rate again, COVID really is hard on the graduation rate too because it really just disengaged a lot of students who are really on the fence anyway. So given that, I think we've done pretty good. We're still continuing to grow. Twenty twenty-one was just a slight dip for Central Mountain High School. But again, we're still green. Hopefully this year we'll be able to continue to grow. And hopefully we'll get that blue. But we're, we're at least above the state average. But obviously our goal is to be the state goal and to have everybody graduate. So going to the next.
I just want to make a point. When we have, I'll call them super seniors. So students who by law are eligible to stay and be educated by us until age twenty-one counts against us. When we keep students by law for what they're legally allowed to do counts against us in those numbers. Yeah. So it's a flawed calculation by PDE. They know it and they have not come up yet with a solution.
Yeah. Yeah. We do not have any super seniors at Bucktail. They're only at Central Mountain High School. So.
Relative to, to CTC and the attendance numbers there, for those who are out on external placements and so forth, does that count against our attendance numbers as well?
No, that does not. And I do not have that included in there because I have, we have not been able to figure out how they count that number. How they determine that, if that is all of our CTE students who have attended all of their courses or is that just their attendance in their CTE courses? So because PA Future Ready isn't available for us for those years, I did not include that.
Okay.
Good question. So moving on to our elementary level, we're still green. Again, you had a little bit of a spike last year, but not quite as high as the secondary. And then this year, as you can see, it's, it's pretty typical, though it is lower than it has been historically. Well, the last couple of years in eighteen nineteen, it wasn't too bad. So elementary kiddos typically want to come to school. They want to be there. It's a super great place to be. They love school. So, but COVID has really wreaked havoc on the elementary level, especially because you have kiddos who have to wear a mask, but often don't wear their mask properly and really don't know anything about personal space. So when someone is positive in that classroom, the likelihood of it taking out a lot of their classmates is a real factor here. And oftentimes we've had to quarantine the entire classroom because really two kids might have been left. So again, that has really played impact on their numbers. So Liberty Curtain is close to the state goal and Mill Hall is really, is at the state average. And the rest of them are close to the state average. So everybody knows that we want our kids in school and they've been trying super hard. But again, this year, especially at the elementary level, those COVID numbers have really, really wreaked havoc on them. So much of the reflections I've hit upon as we go, we continue to follow the updated attendance policies and we continue to put that information out there for our families. We continue with our alert system. So if your kiddo's absent, you're going to get a phone call, text message or an email if, as long as we have your information when you're absent. Also reminding you, yes, Roger.
How do you sign up for that?
It should be automatic if we have your information in the system and going through.
Contact Patty Stevenson.
Actually, I don't think it actually has anything to do with Patty. Chad and I were looking at a different system for next year. And so we went into our system and I think the middle school and the high school, it was set for period two instead of period one. And we're not sure how or why, but as of yesterday, that has been changed. So if your information is in there, Roger, as a contact for a student, you should get that. I don't think it's connected to power announcements or power alerts. So. Well, your kiddo's at the middle school, right?
Correct.
So that would have happened as of yesterday afternoon when we saw that, when we were going in to look to make sure that they were all, how they were set up. Because we wanted to see if we could see how many alerts were going out every day. And we haven't figured out where we can see that yet.
Okay.
So, but the high school and the middle school were two that we're pulling from period two and we don't know how that happened. So, but they are now changed.
So I should start getting alerts?
If you don't, will you let me know?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure you will. Our social worker has also been extremely busy going out and doing home visits every week. The collaboration that he has been able to provide our families with getting them supports and working with them has been amazing. And we definitely keep him busy with our sakes. But again, COVID, it's been hard. And it's been hard because it, it's just hard in general. It affects everybody. But so historically you have kiddos who have had truancy issues. And historically, ironically enough, those are the same kiddos that have been a contact of a contact and have needed to quarantine because they are a contact multiple times. So again, that, that's twofold. They're not in school to really be receiving that instruction. So they're falling further behind and there's really nothing we can do if they say that they're a contact, even if we believe it to be false. So we still have to follow that process and they're quarantining. So it'll be super fantastic when we have very few students who we have to quarantine or where COVID is not so prevalent in our community that it's, it's an issue. Again, we continue to be identified, the Central Mountain High School as a targeted school for improvement for our special education attendance rate. So we've been working with Dr. Barnhart and Patan on some strategies with that and getting more information out to our families via the IEP and our progress reports. We've, we continue to refine our stake processes, which is our student attendance improvement conferences, which sound kind of scary and parents are, you know, intimidated when they get the letter that says you have to have a stake. But really that is just a meeting where we come together to say, hey, you've got lots of unexcused absences. How can we come together to prevent them from happening any further? And we also are continuing to improve our collaboration with children and youth. They're involved in all of our stakes that we have. But we've also improved our relationship with the magistrate's office and getting on board with partnering with them. So we have a tenants' court this year, which is different. So we're working through that as well. So I think everybody is trying to do their part. And of course, the, the pandemic continues to play that part. And just some final reflections on our career standard benchmarks. So we continue to use Smart Futures platform and it's an online platform and it's super easy to track. And as I said, the counselors and teachers are able to catch kiddos who might fall between the cracks. But a new thing this year is when we do a request for records for students who are transferring into our district, we're also requesting their career standard information. And if they have used Smart Futures in the past, they give us their login and then we have access to everything that they've done too. So they don't have to redo it. However, if they come to us with nothing, it's very easy to get them caught up. And again, the graduation portfolio, the career portfolio has been a big help. So I'm excited to continue to use that. We have a plan. Make sure that all of our kiddos meet that benchmark and are blue. So, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. Talk about CTC achievement data. And your first slide talks about industry-based learning and the NOCDIM certifications. As you can see, in eighteen nineteen, fifty-nine point four percent of your students were competent and advanced. In nineteen twenty, tests were canceled. And in twenty twenty-one, we had the option to test or not test. I chose as director to test. Eighty-two percent were competent and advanced. That was out of sixty-two kids, I think it was, that tested. The number would have been higher between the written, which we had four girls that were advanced. They got knocked out due to COVID and didn't take their performance, which I'm sure they would have done well on. So it did affect our number. This is the year I'm really concerned about because we've had two years of a lot of in and out. Kids here, kids out, kids in, kids out. And this one concerns me a little bit, but the early numbers are eighty percent. And we will start testing the week before Easter and finish the last week of April. So we'll see where they fall, but the pre-tests, we're not, we're, we're still in the eighty percent range. We still need to call about four percent to hit the state benchmark is around eighty-six point eight. So we're a little four to five percent below. But I expect that to come up as you see the first ninth grade class next year start to come through for four years. If you go to the next slide, achievement data for industry, earned industry recognized credentials, you're going to see a large jump, one forty-six to five eighty to nine twenty-six. This is basically a jump in attendance, but it's also a jump during COVID. We really hit industry credentials really hard. And we tried to focus, we bought some new platforms for social skills to call SP two platforms that are recognized by the state. And within those platforms, each student can get five to six credentials. And we really pushed them out as soft skills because industry tells us all the time that students don't have soft skills. So we really hit that hard during the pandemic. That, so that number's very high. Your work-based learning data, you can see it's a steady climb. Twenty twenty-one, you had twenty DO students out, still working. A lot of schools shut down this program. We chose not to. We gave it to the employer and said, if you want to continue, some kids did get pushed out. But a lot stayed, eleven co-op and eight interns. And this year, that whole group, we're working with about fifty kids in that group right now. So your numbers have steadily been climbing. And the nice thing is we're finally in school a lot more and students are already getting ready for next year and doing their paperwork early. So we have kids already lined up to leave here right away in September when school, when the doors open. Any questions?
A lot of information. I think there are, you know, from when I looked at the presentation the other day, as this group put it together. Yeah, we know that we had some impacts and things that changed how we do things. However, it also changed the way we do things and that also yielded some positive results as well. So, you know, I, I feel like we've made the best of it and our, our staff, our teachers need to be commended for what they've been able to do with what they've had to manage.
Yeah, I think all things considered. And there were so many negatives that they had to deal with over the last couple of years. And looked, it's especially the elementary data was, was actually, I'm talking our assessment data was, was pretty positive considering so many of their regular teachers were out. So many of the kids were out, so many, it was just like a revolving door. And it, and to do as well as they did, I think it's, that's pretty commendable. So I'll be really anxious to see the spring data and then see how we do if we have a normal year next year.
Thank you. Obviously we love your presentations. And for me, just sitting here, I feel like you all feel really beaten down. And if you are feeling beaten down, it's totally understandable. I can't speak for the whole board, but I know I'm not pointing any fingers anywhere. I mean, the fact that you folks, pardon me, all the employees and staff got through the last two years is so commendable. So if you feel beaten down, we're, we're doing a reset button, okay? All right. No one's pointing any fingers. We see numbers, okay? But we're reasonable. We're all extremely reasonable and we feel so bad for all of you. And I can't thank you enough, okay? So keep at it. We're on a reset button, okay?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody signed up from the public to speak. So we will move on to our superintendent's report.
COVID numbers remain very low in the district. Recent guidance from the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Ed permitted us to lift the mask requirement on our school buses. We are still following the board-approved health and safety plans throughout the district where masking remains voluntary in our schools. I've noticed a marked improvement in the staff and student attendance as quarantines have been greatly reduced across the district. There was, in the end of February, we, if you recall, we came to you and asked you to accept a piano donation from L H U and a trustee. And in the end of February, Mrs. Betsy Dickey organized a really lovely ceremony by which that piano was brought and maybe turned over to us through, you know, them playing the piano and then our students and staff playing the piano as well. Including Dr. David Curtin. He was a key performer along with many members of our, our music department and our Bucktail students. I would again, would like to thank Mrs. Marjorie Krevetsky Dosie, the L H U trustee for her generous donation. I know many students will enjoy that piano for, for many years to come. Kindergarten registration is underway for the class of twenty thirty-five. Families are encouraged to seek information on our district's website for their respective schools. And if you're not sure which school you would attend, I would recommend that you contact our registration office. Or you can call any, any building principal and they will get you to the, the proper place. I would really like to thank Christina Manning, our elementary principals, our kindergarten teachers, our nurses and counselors for all their cooperative work in getting our newest students prepared for fall. A lot goes into kindergarten registration and I hope you enjoy many of the pictures that we'll be pushing out on our social media outlets. And that's all I have this evening.
So we'll move on to committee reports. First, we have facilities.
All right. We had a rather lengthy meeting at, on the twenty-second of last month because we had a lot of things to cover. And so I'll try to get these through these rather quickly in the keep an eye on the, on the clock. But the first item that we talked about, we had with us the representative from ELA who has been doing the feasibility study for our entire athletic program. And we, Todd Smith was the representative was there. We were talking about the fixing the track over at the, by the middle school. There are some problems with the track. It's showing its age. It's about twenty years old. And it's going to be needed to have some repairs. And so we had a lengthy discussion about what we wanted to do with the track. Do we want, we discussed that we want to expand it to eight lanes, which is pretty much what majority of schools have right now. Or do we want to keep it at six lanes? And of course, obviously, if we do an eight-lane track, that's going to increase the, the cost factor that we were going to have to look at as far as replacing the track itself. So we looked at some different options. We had three and you'll see, and you probably, if you looked through the attachments here, we had three different quotes from three different companies for replacing the track with some different types of, types of surfaces and so on. We had from, I believe it's, is it Binon? Am I saying it right? They were the, one of the companies Keystone, who we worked with, put to put the artificial turf on the field a year or so ago. And Millers was the third group. They gave us the base bid cost. They gave us, which you'll see on us, one of the attachments on your, on your agenda tonight. In looking at them, we, we felt that, that the best investment at this point, which what we're going to recommend to the entire board is the one from Keystone with the base bid plus the all second alternate, which is a little bit of an upgrade, but it's certainly not going to be the top of, as far as cost goes. We felt that was the best bang for the buck. The work, hopefully, if we approve this, that we will be done in the summer and hopefully completed by August or September. We had, we had to do some shifting around on our, on our ten-year plan to, for the financing for this. And so we had, there was already money budgeted in there. And so we were able to shift some things around. So if you, you know, you can look at those quotes. If you have any questions, when we get to that, you can, you can ask them and maybe between me and Todd. Not Todd, the wrong guy. Between the administrators here, they can help us with any questions if I, you know, I can't answer. Second item that we had on the agenda, we, we were talking, we had started a conversation about Liberty Curtain building, what we, what we wanted to possibly do with that. Do we want to look at a new, new construction? Do we want to look at renovation? Do we want to look at addition to somewhere else, one of the other buildings? What, you know, and we're not decided on anything. I want to emphasize that right up front. There's nothing that was decided. So we, we had talked with Crabtree. And they had started, if you recall, a couple of years ago, they had started a study for us on the entire district, which, and then we got into COVID, and that study really never got completed. So what they were, are willing to do at no extra charge, they're going to look at Liberty Curtain as part of that study and come back with some recommendations for us, hopefully here within the next couple of months. So we'll see, you know, they'll tell us what our options are and then we go from there. We decide if we, what we want to do down the road with that. So that's something that's an ongoing kind of thing we'll be looking at later on further. Another project that needed to be done was the Bucktail Gym Floor. That is, we had some repairs done on that last summer, I believe, and that they're still not exactly acceptable from a safety standpoint. So we are going to, we have received a quote from, I think, the same group gave us a quote for the, the track, Millers. And I think their, their quote came in well under what we had, had budgeted for that project originally in the ten-year plan. So that quote is in there and we would like to get that approved so we can get that started and done also this summer. We had talked at the last meeting about possibly applying for a DCNR grant as a partnership with them to get some funding that would, could have possibly been used for the track project. However, the timeline on the grant was just too tight, was I think was due April first, and we could not get that done in time. There was just, we just didn't have the manpower to do it in that short of, of a turnaround time. So we're looking maybe at that grant for next year for maybe some, some other projects. There was a change order from J C O R for, to finish up with the Bucktail project. I think there was some ceilings and so on that, that were in some areas that needed to be done. And so it's, there's an additional change order there. I think it's in the neighborhood of nine thousand dollars. We also, on the agenda tonight, you'll see a request from Woodward Township. If you recall, about a year or so ago, they had made a, come to us about getting an easement for a section of land behind Woodward School there near their office that they would like to use for an access road. And we finally, the attorneys have finally worked out all the, the details on it. You'll see that there is a, an agreement on there with all the details that we were, were asking for the board, board's approval on that too. We think that it's, if you, if you read through all the details, you'll see that it's, you know, pretty, pretty much a very protected agreement for us. We, we have the option. If we at any time want to take it back, we can do it. I think it's within a ninety-day or three months or some, something like that, thirty days or time period. We've also scheduled some building tours for the board members. I know some of the members have been wanting to take tours of the building. And that's going to be, they've been set up for the month of April, several different dates. And there was a, also Clinton County Tourism Grant that we had talked about a little bit for possibly using it for some cross-country course or whatever. And we would like to look at that maybe for, also for, excuse me, for next year. And as I mentioned earlier, we did make some, shifting some things around in order to free up some money for the track project in the ten-year plan. So there were a couple of things moved around in there. And there is, it is also on the agenda tonight for you to take a look at the updated ten-year plan. So I think that's it. As you, it was a long meeting, but it was a productive one and we got a lot of things done. And we have, I think, the recommendations are sound for what we, we are asking the board to approve. So I think it's going to, the track will be nice. And I think the, the Bucktail Gym Floor would also be something, both of them are, are necessary at this stage of the game because they, from a safety standpoint, if nothing else, we want to make sure that the kids have safe facilities to use. So I think they're both worthwhile. So, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, I got a couple of questions. All right. The Bucktail Gym Floor. Is there any recourse we have with the company that did the work recently that didn't do it right by the sounds of it? Is there any financial recourse? I mean, is there any guarantee on the work that they did?
Well, I think
Was it something within the bidding process that maybe we thought this would get away with it and it just didn't work?
Are you talking about the repairs that were made?
Yes, yes, yes.
No, I, I don't think it's, I don't think that the repairs were substandard or anything. I don't think that they were, it's just the fact that the whole floor is really old. And it, yeah, it was just, it didn't really solve what we wanted to solve. I mean, it was okay for a short-term fix, but I think the gym floor needs replaced anyway. It's been there for, I don't know how many years. And I think it's just something that we felt at this point, you know, because of the repairs and stuff, it's just the time to do it.
Which asks the same questions, Randy, when we were in the process. It's a good, it's a great question.
And then my other question is real quick. The DCNR grant partnership, which could have maybe been used on the track if there'd been more time.
Right.
If that can get us enough money, then why don't we put off the track to next year and put grant, try to get the grant next year and do the work then? I mean, I don't know if the amount of money is a substantial amount.
Well, it would have been, it would have been a fifty-fifty split. We would have had to match what they would have, which we could have done this year. But as far as, I, I don't think, we can't, we really can't, the track isn't
It's in dire need.
But you're going to give up that much money. Why didn't we know about this track?
We did know, we did know about this track last year. And what we did is we had to put patches on the track just to make it safe to run season.
It just seems to me we're throwing away a lot of money, potential, potentially, because there's never a guarantee.
I think the DCNR grant was tied in with, with participation of the public. So you have to set a real schedule of when the general public can use it. So there's a lot of stipulations with the DCNR grant that we have to really look into and explore.
I'm just curious, maybe it sometimes seems like we get these projects that we should have known about before, that just all of a sudden now they have to be done right now.
Well, I think there's, there's
Pass up grant money.
The track's been band-aided for a while. I mean, it's, it's
And it's been on the ten-year plan since the beginning of the ten-year plan. So it was, there's no surprise that it's here. And I, I think, I agree, I know where you're going with this, but the DCNR grants and having more time, we've got plenty of projects and plenty of time in the future that may, and there may be a better fit for that particular grant and time to look at other grants. And I know that Elizabeth's on here tonight. She's provided us with a lot of information. She's given Susan some contacts. Susan's reached out to them as well. And so we're, we, we haven't rejected by any means going after grants. As a matter of fact, I think, well, I think we're actually poised better now to be a grant recipient, be a successful grant recipient next year than we would be if we tried to slam something in, which we absolutely do not have the capacity to do. And so there, if you take a deep dive into the facility plan, you'll see that there is no shortage of, of projects coming down the pike.
No, there are, there are many. And
If I do have a question on the Bucktail floor replacement, and this is not a question on why or anything like that, but it does state under exclusions that prevailing wage rates are not included. A project of that size would prevailing wage not apply?
I, Rob, can you answer that?
I can answer it. Prevailing wage does apply and we will follow up with the vendor. They know that. It's the same vendor that just did the last project. Sorry, Rob, I didn't realize you were in the room.
Sorry, I think you're looking at the one from the, not from Keystone. Keystone's did include the prevailing wage. Right, I'm looking at the Miller one for the Bucktail Gym Floor.
Gym Floor.
That's a CoStar's number that they have their prevailing wage stuff covered in, is what I was told when they presented it to us. It just makes me a little uncomfortable that we sign off on something that says that we're, is excluding prevailing wage and then they come and say, oh, well, the labor's really this amount. Well, I think it's because that, that's under that CoStar's number is how, why they put it in that way. I'll, I'll follow up with them on that though, to make sure. And I do want to comment on the question that he asked, or one of you got, I think you asked on the, the repair that was made. We did negotiate back with Miller Flooring and the only thing we ended up paying for, has it all wash out? Is the screen, screening and recoding of the gym floor last year. They've pretty much eaten all of their materials and labor they had on the repair that we agreed that would be, be there. And it's through a process of negotiation. And we've also received a, a ten thousand dollar credit back from McLeaur because they had some, some liability in it from, from the water. So the, the number that we're approving on the, the two sixteen, I believe,
Shows that
Well, it shows the credit back for, for the, from Millers, but it doesn't show the ten thousand. The McLeaur will send us a check for the ten thousand for, that was a negotiated thing after the committee met. The facilities committee met, sent me on a direction of how to, to work it out with McLeaur. I had a conversation with McLeaur today and they are going to send that check for ten thousand once we sign this contract with them. And I'll follow up with your, your point on that, Bo, to make sure that we're, we're good on that. But Millers is, they've done plenty of projects and they, they take care of that on, on all of them.
And, and I think originally in the, if I'm not mistaken, Susan, you can correct me on this, but I think originally we had budgeted for that gym floor, I think three hundred thousand in the, in the ten-year plan. And so we were able to get a much, as you can see, a much better, much better price. And we're saving ourselves nearly a hundred thousand dollars. So
I did take a pretty in-depth look also, Roger, on the, the DCNR grant after it came forward. It's not a great fit as far as for the track being a lot of it because they have to have it open to the public for, there's a huge amount of time that it has to be open to the public and it's not where our track wouldn't be. We think that it is a better fit coming for a project that we're looking at for next year. So we'll, we're going to revisit that, have more time.
Todd, just so you know, my name's Roger. That's Randy. You're Rob and that's Jeff.
And maybe I'll get your name right, Rob, one of these days.
All right, personnel negotiations.
Okay, my report is going to be markedly shorter than Jeff's was. Only because I'm not allowed to talk about anything, but I will say that personnel negotiations have been meeting fairly regularly lately. You know, sometimes up to, you know, every other week, if not more, mainly because we are currently involved with the negotiations with the ACCE, the, the teachers' union. And obviously I can't disclose where those negotiations stand right now.
Safety and security?
Who is it?
Paulie.
Paulie. Roger, I thought you were the chair of that.
Oh, I thought we decided you were the chair of that. I'll give the report though, this time, if you want me to.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so because it's held an executive session, there's nothing we can say. And we didn't have a meeting, so.
Okay.
You don't need to report.
That's easy, Paulie. You got that one for the next time.
All right, moving on to our information items. We have the Treasurer's Report, our financial reports and our enrollment reports. Anybody have any questions on any of those three?
Jackie, how is the, how are the numbers looking so far with kindergarten registration as of numbers this year versus what we have?
Yeah, I, I don't have those numbers, Randy, but we'll have a few more registrations throughout this week. So if, if you want, I could get you some, some data by, I'll maybe be able to update you next Thursday with a little better. And by the end of the, the month, and one of the reports I send you, I'll give you an update about that too, and we can follow up in April.
Thank you.
Sure.
Under Board, we are going to do a change on our Board Committee or our Board Meetings. On June 9th is when we were scheduled to have our, our work session that month, but that coincides with graduation.
June 2nd.
June 2nd, sorry. So now June 9th. Oh, we're, why do we have them back at 1:00 again? That we were doing separate in June, or did we decide differently?
Well, originally the meetings were June 2 and June 9.
Right.
So we want to go to June 9 and June 16.
But that's not what this says.
Yeah, that's not what the, what our draft here says.
On the same day.
So could we change that, please? Yeah, it's still, that's pretty important to have two separate meetings that month with the final budget adoption. Correct. So that is being updated and will be posted accordingly. And then there is requests for support of a resolution on the fair funding. Going on lawsuit going on. Jeff, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I, I know probably some of you saw this in the PSBA daily update that they send us. But the, this person that is kind of coordinating all of this information about this state fair funding lawsuit that's been going on for several weeks and months now. And I guess they're going to wrap it up according to what was said earlier tonight, next week. But I came across, one of the things she sent through was a resolution of support for this fundraising the tax, fair tax thing. And the fair funding lawsuit. And I think it's, I would really recommend, and the stuff that she sent is really good stuff because she recommends that anybody, any organization, any municipality, any kind of PTO or any group really, that is interested in supporting this, this thing, this lawsuit, that you can, there's a resolution that you can pass and they recommend that you send it to the Governor, to the Secretary of Ed, to our legislators, to all of the people in Harrisburg that have an important, Jake Corman and all the folks down there. And also to publicize it in the newspaper. Because I think it's important that we send a message as a district, just like we did with the charter school funding situation. I think it's important that we go on record as saying that we are in full support of this because it certainly is going to benefit a district like ours and all the other small schools and small districts around and the rural districts in particular that are not getting, I think, their fair shake as far as this, as the school funding goes. So it is in your agenda, agenda as an attachment. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it. I know we just got on there yesterday. But I would recommend that we go ahead and, and approve this and send a message that we are in favor of. A number of the other districts, including State College, has also approved this and sent that, sent it to the people, the powers that be. And I also think we should, you know, make sure that our, our local folks around the municipalities, the commissioners and whoever else would also, I would recommend that they, you know, vote and support it as well, so.
So are you looking at us to do this as a board?
Yes, I would say-
Not individuals?
No, well, you, if you want to, but I would say it's going to have more, more punch if we do it as a board and saying that this is something we fully support and are fully behind, so.
I wouldn't see how an individual would pass a resolution.
Well, I, you know-
Well, I mean, it's a-
You could write a letter, but wow.
It's really designed for, for groups to do as far whether it's a, she, she listed some, some of the people or some of the groups that could do it, PTOs, community groups, homeschool associations, rural councils.
Are we going to hand these down to, is it possible for us to hand it down to PTOs?
Yes, so that, I guess that's kind of where the discussion would leave. There's a template here and some information for the, the members of this board to consider. And if this is something you want us to pursue between now and next week, we can finalize this, you know, fill in the blanks type deal. But also, you know, if we want to add any additional information of why we believe we should do this. And I think when you think about our budget update that you saw tonight and you saw the $82, $83 million in Keystone Central, our taxpayers locally are responsible for 70% of that bill. But yet you look at the equalized mill about what's happening. And then you look, I mean, what we spend per student compared to what wealthy districts spend per student is drastically different. And then when you go into the, it's even more apparent when you look at what is our charter tuition rate to the cyber charters. And any school district in the state, any student can sign up for one of those outside cybers. And the rate that they get paid for that student for the same exact service is vastly different, dependent upon what that district currently spends per child. So there, there's something seriously wrong with this system. And Pennsylvania cannot continue to run two separate school systems within one Commonwealth. Something has to give. And I think there's been some very compelling testimony over the last several weeks as to why there's an unfair school funding formula in Pennsylvania. And so if this board feels strongly about it, and I know that many of you do, because of, we see what the impact is on Keystone Central. So if we take a stand and we understand why we're doing that, and then we communicate that to our local legislators, I think at some point they have to listen, our local legislators have to listen and stand up for what's right for the people of this school district.
And I, I see Chris, Chris Morelli's on here tonight. And I'd be more than happy to see that he gets a copy of this, that if we, if we pass it. And I'll also, John, both of them, if they could give us some, give it some publicity, that would be great.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you so much for doing all this backwork and bringing it to our attention. And yes, and thank you for telling about, saying about the newspapers, same with the commissioners. I can't thank you enough. We all thank you. This is, this is great stuff and I fully support it, obviously. Thank you.
Welcome.
So it sounds like there's enough support from the members here that we want to pursue getting this formalized for next week.
I think it's incumbent on us to do it because there are school districts out there who absolutely would not do this. And they tend to be the ones that get listened to most by the legislature and, and other powers that be, so if not us, who?
Exactly.
So.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Is it, is it possible that we can have that sent out to all PTOs? Is that something that we, we are able to do?
Yeah, we, we could follow up with our PTOs. I think that we could follow up with many of the municipalities in our area. And I also have had some conversations with the Clinton County Economic Partnership Executive Board on Wednesday morning about the same thing. And so it's possible that that group could also, if, if willing, consider passing a resolution to the same effect.
I think the more the better.
Powerful group.
The more the better.
Absolutely.
All right. So moving on to policies, we have a first read on policy 8053. Use of force and weapons from our security. There is an addition of the, I believe, the long rifles that we just purchased. So we have to get that approved, get it, our policy changed to include those and how they'll be used and locked up. Any questions on that? Again, this is just first read.
So we would be looking at second read next week and possible approval. So if you could pay some close attention to that one, we would appreciate it. We are not going to purchase and move forward with that purchase until the policy is in place. I guess that would be, would be simultaneously next week, right?
Sorry, did I say?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, and then the next one is policy 918. It's title, it's a Title I policy that has to be reviewed annually. There's no recommended changes.
This is a compliance.
And going on to minutes from the work and voting sessions last month, Facility Committees and Finance Committee meeting from this past Tuesday. Any questions or comments on those? And then we'll move on to our business, bills for payment. Any questions on that?
No questions, but just a comment that it looks like we're buying a Haas CL1 checker lathe. And that's from one of the leading manufacturers of CNC equipment in the world, I understand. And I am very happy to see that on there. It's great that our students get the opportunity to, to work with that, that level of professional equipment.
Thanks for bringing that up. I know that Kurt and I talked about this purchase.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Kurt, you're going to have to go to a mic because it's really good news and you're going to want to hear it.
I guess the first thing I'll say, the reason we chose Haas is because Haas is the leading manufacturer, but also is our, the kids, when they go through NIMS and they go through their training, Haas does all the Skills USA materials, so they're trained on the vest. We've been lucky enough to acquire 170,500 some odd dollars in equipment in four years in the Machine Trades Program with a total cost to the district of $1,860. And that's just equipment. And there's over $30,000 worth of instructional materials that we also got through grants. Excellent.
Good catch there, Mr. Miller.
I informed the President that I was going to bring that one up.
All right, next is the pre-participation of Keystone Central in the Community Eligibility Provision Program.
This is a follow-up to the presentation that you heard last month about the free breakfast and lunch program.
And there's Resolution 129, and that'll be to transfer committed funds from General Fund to the Capital Fund to support the 10-year capital project plan.
This is something that was discussed last month at the Finance Committee meeting. And it, there was some general consensus that the board would want to consider moving these funds.
There is a settlement. And then the update to the 10-years facility plan, which I believe Jeff covered on that. That was what, Bucktail?
Yeah, and the track.
And the track. The Keystone Sports Construction is approving the bid to include the base bid in alternate two with Keystone Sports Construction. And that is for the track. That is part of the 10-year plan. And then the agreement with Miller Flooring.
So Rob did send me a message since your question, I think we need to get some updated numbers for that for next week.
The number's going to stay the same, Jackie.
Oh.
But it's what's going to happen is he quoted that when he did the repair and the repair didn't have prevailing wage on it. The, it originally, the repair and the replacement, so I'll just have him.
It's technical, it's a technicality that will be rectified.
I don't know why things like that just jump out at me sometimes.
It's a good thing they do.
I hung on the other one that we were looking at with Jeff. I didn't catch on that.
Then there's- Then there's the update on the JCOR change order. That's for the Bucktail renovation project, not to exceed $9,601.71 paid for by the 2020 bond. And then the easement, the agreement with Woodward Township on the agrees, on the easement to use some of our land to access the back of their building. And the ISP bid award to Zito Media Communications for three years for district-wide internet services, not to exceed 26,400 per year paid for by the General Fund. And-
A note on that, Madam President, and Mr. Crepe can correct me if I'm wrong. That sounds like an awful lot of money, but most of that we get back through E-rate reimbursements, I believe.
Okay, all right. Chad Shaken said yes, all right. And did we not, okay, you have to do that one yet. Cabling for Computech for Bucktail for classroom cabling, the word the bid to Computech, not to exceed $27,445 after the E-rate approval. And the same with, there's a fiber optic upgrade, not to exceed $600 after E-rate approval.
Crazy. This is Susan. That, that second one will actually say not to exceed 900. So that'll, that'll be corrected for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And we have a local business donation from Puffin Snuff for student dual enrollment costs based on financial hardships and the amount of $5,000. Students at Central Mountain High School or Bucktail High School may be eligible. So these are, that's a pretty nice donation.
It is, and we're so grateful for that. As we do have students who participate in dual enrollment opportunities, it's not free on, on the, the part of the student. And even though it's a low rate, we're appreciative of Lock Haven University and other universities who give us really low rates to make this possible. For some students, that, that residual is still a barrier for them having access to courses. So this generous donation allows, that will allow many students to have the opportunity that they would not have otherwise done. This is similar to a donation we have from another donor, but that other donor is specific to Lock Haven University. This one is for many, could be used for any of the dual enrollment opportunities that we have.
And Resolution Number 130 for the IU's budget for 2223 and the amount of $2,186,244. Any questions on that? Go on to Personnel, have various leaves of absence, the typical, hirings, resignations, any?
President.
Yes.
I'd like to know, can we have a discussion with the Personnel Committee over the fact that we seem to have such a high turnover in our support staff?
Sure.
I just feel we need to start taking a hard look at what's going on, what's causing that. Is it the environment, is it salary?
We've definitely discussed it.
Yeah, we've definitely discussed it. I think it's something we need to start to try to really fix because we need to come up with what the problem is. yeah, we need to come up with what the problem is. It's a multiple problems and because it's the cost of training people constantly.
Yeah, and, and Randy, I, so one thing I just do want to mention is as a superintendent, I've been working very closely with the other superintendents in IU ten to, we, we all are sharing the same concern, uh, regionally, and we've been discussing multiple solutions and finding, and everybody's been very open to share what they've tried. And, um, I wish I had, I wish there was a silver bullet somewhere to say, oh, this is what's working. But even a lot of the things that the other districts have tried have not been able to change the situation. And I know that anybody on this board who, who is familiar with industry outside of education is experiencing the same, some of the same issues. But I, I do believe that it would be worth having, you know, a, a more robust discussion about that if you wish, because I don't know that all the board members are aware of all of the strategies and things that we have been doing.
It's, it becomes incredibly difficult to, uh, to necessarily attract and then retain employees when you have places like Walmart that are offering sixteen dollars an hour to be a personal shopper and that's starting wages.
Don't give them any more press.
Really?
Don't broadcast that.
But this is a much, much better.
And there's benefits.
Good hours.
Benefits are much better.
Uh, you know, I will say that on a weekly basis, we are receiving applications, which is more than what some other folks are saying. So, um, there's some bright spots there. And as we've been sitting here tonight, I've received another application, a notification of another one in the support staff. So we are, um, not waiting and, um, trying to, to move people through the processes as, as best we can and hire, you know, capable folks.
Okay, anything else on the personnel? All right, then we have our athletic personnel, um, hiring of various game workers plus appointing volunteers. Any, any questions on that?
I just have one question on that.
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Hawk can clarify it for me. I just, looking down through there, I just saw a name for Michael Karr Callers, a baseball volunteer at Central Mountain High School. Is that correct?
Might be actually Stephen.
It could be Bucktail, that's what I thought.
No, I, I think that's an error. I, I noticed that just tonight and I wanted to contact Kelly. If you look further, I think the Anna Portman's also a game worker at Central Mountain and that should be Bucktail as well.
Yeah, I thought I saw that last month, the Anna Portman.
All right, well, we'll get that straightened out. Thank you. Any other questions there? All right, that is our agenda for this week.
I'll second it.
All right, everyone. Have a great night.